Hi Judy.
How come the link did not include the password?
I don't know, maybe because we keep using it. Sometimes I'm asked for it and sometimes I'm not.
Well, usually the link does and you, the meeting ID, you have to add it, but normally when you get a link, it's, it puts you right through. And if they're going to use the waiting room too, it's such a thing as too much. By the way, I found out what the problem with the muting was and I explained it to Ashley.
Oh, nice. Good. So you're good. I can hear you.
Well, yeah.
Hi Peter.
Hi Peter.
Oh, he's connecting. He doesn't hear us yet.
Somebody's got a radio on.
Uh, that's my background music. I mean, my background.
Okay. You can mute yourself when you're not actually talking and then it won't be a problem. We have a guest.
Say hi. Hi Peter.
Hi everybody. Hi Melissa, hi Judy.
Hi Laura. Okay, hi guys. John may not make it, Peter. Can you hear her? John.
Oh.
John may not make it.
Oh, okay.
Peter, did you get my email?
I got the one you, I asked you about the parking lot, but I see there's a new one you just sent.
Oh, I was just telling you if we ever need the maps, as long as Ashley allows me to share screen, which she has to allow me to do, I'll be able to put maps up.
Oh, great.
She's telling me you should already be fine to share the screen. It should work.
Well, she just has to turn the setting on, that's all.
She said, it's on. It's always on.
Okay, great. I mean, I don't think it's relevant tonight.
No, it shouldn't be, but...
And I would want to prepare. I'd want to know which, you know, which cases.
I'm with you.
The, um...
Oh, John might...
Chestnut Hill Road one is going to be one that we're going to need your maps on.
When?
Don't know when it's coming up yet, but...
Which one is it though?
Chestnut Hill Road said five lot subdivision on about forty, fifty acres off of Chestnut Hill.
Oh yeah, I remember that one. What's the guy's name?
Supis.
Tru- Travis?
Supis.
Supis.
I'll find it. Yeah, I'm not sure that I mapped it yet, but I certainly can and that will take care of it.
I think he, I think we've had it up before.
Yeah, well, I found out the reason I was having so much trouble moving it to the new laptop. It would not load and it crashed because of all of the orthographic photographs. It just could not deal with it. Once I turned them all off, it worked like a charm. So I'm going to have to rebuild that aspect as we need it.
Okay.
And I'm waiting for them to put up the 2019 flyover, which they haven't. So maybe they didn't do it in 2019.
Hi James.
Hey, how are you Melissa? How are you?
Good, how are you?
Hey James.
Hello all.
You're looking very orange tonight.
I'm very orange. My, my, my New Zealand shirt.
Oh, is that what it is?
Last place I made it to before we couldn't go anywhere anymore.
Well, I was wearing the garment that I bought in South Africa for the reading that I gave last, last weekend.
Yep. All those souvenirs mean quite a lot lately, don't they?
Well, I bought, this is a very high, high-end garment and I bought it in order to be able to give it, use it, wear it for readings. So, I did.
Hi Brian.
Hi everybody.
You're looking good.
Hey Brian. Hey, where's your dog?
My dog?
Cat. Your cat.
She's, uh, she's doing what she's doing best right now.
So is mine.
Taking a nap. Oh, there she is.
A little angry.
That's where she usually is when I'm online.
She, uh, she's kind of a zen cat that probably comforts you and gives you support in meetings. Am I reading too much into that?
Ah, she likes to be on me one way or the other. And if I don't let her be on my lap, she's going to be up there and sometimes she washes my hair.
Hey Peter, hey James.
Hi.
Hello there.
Stuart is coming in. And I have no idea who the two phone calls are.
I already admitted them. We have, we have tons of public spectators.
Yeah.
Boy, should have got a different haircut.
What I found out and told Ashley is that if she sets the meeting up as mute on entrance, then she also has to turn off the ability to unmute people, for people to unmute themselves.
I know, I'm controlling the meeting now.
Okay.
We, we switch back and forth, we try, but I, I typically unmute you guys and leave everybody else.
I'm unmuted right now.
Hi Stuart.
Hello.
But in the, in the security panel, you should check and make sure the ability to unmute themselves is turned off.
You, as the board members, you can always unmute yourselves.
Melissa, thank you in advance for everything.
Aw, thank you Brian.
The press is here.
I'm missing the little things like, you know, like packing lunch is a real pain in the butt to be back at work full time.
Press is here, does that mean I can't eat during the meeting?
Uh, you can, you can turn off your camera.
I'll give you a pass, you can eat.
You'll give us your cat picture back if you turn off your camera.
I realize that.
Well, that's what you've been showing us for the last couple of meetings.
And there's a reason for that Judy.
Huh?
And there's a reason for that Judy.
Oh yeah. Well, you know what mine looks like, don't you?
Show me. Oh, well, do, do that again. I can't see it.
That's Reb Kugel, the Rubba Dub Dubba Ribba, who's a seventh degree Morse Spelt.
I love it.
Peter, we don't have Connor, but we do have a quorum if you want to get started and Tom is probably going to be here.
Stuart to show up, but I see his name there.
He's here, he's just muted and his, and his camera's not turned on.
Okay, alright. It is seven o'clock and I would like to call to order the Town of Woodstock Planning Board Workshop Zoom Meeting of July 30th, 2020. This is a Zoom meeting and it's a workshop meeting, which I've always held that should be done just for workshops, which is just for the planning board to do planning. But in this case, we have before us the library, which is a town public institution that serves the public. And so, we all agreed to spend our workshop meeting to go through the SECRE and help the library get on their way. So, first of all, are there any updates to the agenda Melissa?
No. Wait, Matt Rudikoff isn't on yet either.
I see that, but he'll get there. Now, I also see that Connor Wink wanted to have something in here. Is he on yet?
He is not on yet. He's not here. That was the zoning revision committee, something, yeah.
Alright, well, let me go on with the library issue. The objective of the library, of course, is to replace the building with a new building. And to do that, they have to go through a secret process and a planning process. So, the, uh... Hello?
Hello?
Yep?
Yep.
Okay.
Okay.
So, the... So I got an echo coming back on me here somehow. So the issue came down to lead agency of the SECRE review and the library wished to be the lead agency. And the planning board thought that they were best suited to. And so, we got to a standstill and we're going to the DEC to get them to make a ruling. But during the process, we did some back and forth and I have to thank Stuart very much and Jeff Collins for working out a deal. And we did. And the, the deal basically is that the library will be the lead agency and the planning board will reserve the right to review the SECRE review completely. And the library agrees not to declare a NECD until the planning board completes their review. And the library also agreed to hire the town planner to review the SECRE and to review the site plan review, which the planning board will be doing later. We also are doing it on this workshop meeting because the library's in a bit of a time squeeze to get, on a ballot to, to get a funding. So, that's why we're dealing with this tonight. The objective is to go through the SECRE review and of course, we have Matt's memo. And Matt, when he gets here, will go through that. But meanwhile, members of the planning board got a letter from the library with their SECRE review, which is a long-form environmental review. And then they touched on issues that they thought needed to be addressed. So, I read the entire SECRE through and I only found two issues, both of which the library has already dealt with in their review. But I felt strongly enough about it that the planning board should make an additional request. And the first one is to do with stormwater retention during the construction phase. We definitely do not want silt or groundwater getting into the creek. So, the library has a protocol for how to deal with that. And they have an engineer doing designs to, to deal with the groundwater and the stormwater retention. But I asked the library, and we went back and forth with, with Jeff Collins, if the library would be willing to allow the planning board to have their own independent engineer review of the stormwater retention. And the library agreed to that. So, there'll be two engineer reports on stormwater retention. The other issue I had, of course, was parking and access. Parking in this town is always an issue. This is a public library, it's been operating since forever and we have never had a problem with parking. And I don't expect things to change that much. But we did get the library to agree with one of the issues on the parking, which was that they were including spaces that were actually belonging to the hardware store in their town. And we asked them to not include those and they agreed to do that. So that ups their needed parking spaces by quite a bit before they just needed two. Now I believe it's fourteen. The access issue, the library also agreed to make, to, to, to make a deal, to make an arrangement. We asked, the planning board asked, Stuart and I, speaking to Jeff, asked if the library would agree to have their employees park in the lower Como parking lot, thereby freeing up what spaces they have for patrons coming to the library. And the library agreed to that. The other issue, of course, is getting from the lower Como parking lot to the library. Well, the town and the state, it took three years and we just put in a road crossing that comes from the Como parking lot, which, and then the Como driveway. The town has a pedestrian walkway alongside the Como road, which is fenced off and, and it's a sidewalk, which leads to the sidewalk in front of the apothecary, which then crosses the road to the police station. That took us three years to get through. We had to do the engineering, topo, state, and it's done. So there is a safe way to park in the Como and to get on the other side of Route 212. I know people brought up, the issue is, well, can, what about if people want to cross 212 in front of the library? Can we get another crossing there? And I spoke to the supervisor about that. He said he's willing to go to the state and, and discuss it. But quite frankly, if you think about it, we just put a crossing on one side of the Como drive. You, you can't imagine the state wanting to put one on the other side. And it would completely mess things up because the town has the walkway on the other side of the Como drive. So, yes, the library and the town are willing to look at safer ways of crossing 212, but honestly, we have about the safest way we can get right now, which is a state crossing. So, those are the two issues. And as far as a SECRE determination, do you have a NECD or POSDEC?
Peter, let me just say, I'm, I'm, I'm on the line. I, I, I couldn't sign on on the video. So I had to call in and I'm sorry for being late, but I'm, this is Matthew Rudikoff. I'm on the line now.
Okay Matt, okay. Well, I'm going to have you do your memo in a minute. Just want to finish this. So, to, the object of tonight's meeting is for the planning board to listen to Matt's review of the SECRE and our review of the SECRE, which we've been doing back and forth over the last two weeks. And I say, those are the only two issues. The SECRE is an environmental review. And replacing that building, there's no environmental issues. We're not, it's not as if there was no building there in the first place. We're not changing anything. So, there's really no environmental issue other than the stormwater, which we've dealt with. So, after Matt's presentation, I want, the object of tonight is to declare for the board to make a decision between NECD and POSDEC. And as I said, the NECD requires, or the POSDEC requires two environmental issues that really are a problem. And I don't see that. So, Matt, I don't know if, I hope everybody here has his memo in front of him. But if not, Matt, I'm going to, can you go through your memo for the board?
Sure. But what I wanted to do was, I'm sorry for being late, but I, I, had all the board members commented on things? Or was that, Peter, was that just your few introductory comments about the crosswalks and, and all that?
Yeah, we've, the board's been back and forth on these issues and, you know, discussed it.
No, I mean, to, to, tonight, tonight.
No, not tonight, of just, uh...
Oh, good, good, right, alright. That's what I was asking about. So for tonight, it was just you making those few introductory comments. So, in terms of this memo, this memo was written under the impression, not under the impression, but as a response, or this issues that the planning board might want to consider as part of its response to the library regarding the lead agency circulation as an involved agency. So these comments are written with the planning board, which I know they are not technically that yet until everyone's in agreement. But from the perspective of them being an involved agency and making comments to the library about issues such as the one Peter was just talking about, in terms of crosswalks and pedestrian safety and, but making them in the context of sort of a combined comment for either necessary for the SECRE review or necessary for site plan review. So it's really a combination of both things because those are both things that the planning board is going to need to sort of determine. So it's telling you about things that maybe are going to be what the library needs to consider in SECRE and, and other things that are going to be things that if they're not answered in SECRE will be, have to be dealt with under the site plan review when that, when that occurs. So, that's really, that's really the, the sum and substance of it. And there's really a summarizing sentence that says exactly that, which I think is sort of important. And it's, it just says that the following, and this is before the list of all the items, the following would be required by the planning board for the subject project review for either a SECRE review and for the site plan review. So that's really the idea, is it's a list of issues that are going to be things that the planning board may want to advise the library just just about, that are factors that will go into their decision. And they're just sort of, some of them are boxes that need to be checked. Others of them are things where the library needs to come up with some answers, such as the kind of issues that Peter was just mentioning in terms of crosswalk. So, really, we reviewed the material that's been submitted. And that's a very, that's a, for, for lead agency circulation, I just want everybody to know, that is a reasonably detailed package of material. But again, this, this package is not to base anybody's decision on. Like you're not going to base your site plan review on this package of, of drawings and material. But it's certainly one where you can sort of assess what the issues are that the board's going to be concerned about. And so, some of them are being mentioned and other, other members of the board have mentioned other of those issues. And they've come through into this memo, translated into a, a, a language, which really is, you know, how does this get addressed either by the lead agency in SECRE or later by the planning board in site plan review? So it really starts with, and that includes like looking at the traffic study because, for example, it, it just reminds me, on the verified items, pedestrian safety and street crossing. So, we didn't make a, do a critique of the, of the, of the environmental material. So for example, related pedestrian safety and street crossing, the traffic report is a very good traffic report, but it really analyzes the one intersection and the level of service of that intersection for vehicles coming in and going out of that intersection. And with the very low volumes involved, of course, the, 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 the conditions, what's called level of service, they stay the same before or after. So that's fine and it's true for the cars, but there's a whole other factor in, in the traffic study when you're in a small neighborhood and such an isolated location, which is pedestrian comfort with, with ambiance in terms of the quality of the community, you're changing the character of the community. So there's just a little bit more that goes into that. And that, if you look at the traffic study, the word pedestrian is never really mentioned or looked at, nor is, um, um, safety really looked at or bicycles really so discussed. So in theory, there could be some things more that would go into the traffic study that would get at some of the things that are, that are in the memo. And I don't intend to go on like that for every item, but it's really the perfect example because adequate provision for safe pedestrian movement, that's something that does get handled in traffic study. It's just when the lead agency chooses to look in that way at the circumstance as it relates to, you know, pedestrian environment and safety and, and things like that, not just the traditional vehicular intersection functioning. So the number one is really all about the kinds of things that have been, uh, mentioned. Uh, there's one detail on sidewalk widths, I think we couldn't tell that, but there's some, uh, does that, was that factored into that analysis? But again, we're not saying that, that the lead agency has to do these studies. We're just pointing out these being things that are, will be part of the planning board's normal consideration. Parking, of course, is all of the issues that have already been addressed. And this is really just an articulation of them in the context of presenting more clearly what's existing and what's proposed. And, uh, the, the square footage of the building itself has varied and that would affect the parking requirement. The square footage description and, and different things, like in the, in the letter, the narrative, the traffic report and the EAF, each have different square footage amounts for the size of the building. So coming up with a consistent size of the building would dictate, you know, what the parking requirements are. And, uh, so some parking comments, I don't think we have to go through them in detail because they're obvious things that, uh, they're valid questions and obvious things. And do they have to be done as part of your SECRE view? I, I'm not really addressing things from that perspective. I'm just saying whoever's the lead agency really has to detail those kinds of things. And I don't believe the planning board, the only thing, my understanding is the only thing the planning board is deciding is who should be lead agency tonight. And of course, this memo is, is really not, in theory, addressed to the applicant. It's really addressed to the planning board. And the planning board can either make changes in some of the things that I've described, or if I've omitted things, or they've thought, or, you know, or board members have thought of new things, what goes to you as being the planning board's actual response to the lead agency's circulation and the, and the arrangements that the library and the planning board have been making with each other, that would, could go into the document that ultimately is formally given to the library as ours, as the library's response, excuse me, as the planning board's response to the library. So the parking comments continue with, um, some technical aspect of the ADA parking spot that we just happened to observe regarding the, the parallel access. The comment on utility poles, that's just a sort of a, a site planning question and, you know, you answer it, you have your engineer or engineer, or engineer reviewing. And then stormwater, there's, you know, issues there. Not that there's any major problem with the planning board, has the obligation, if they were lead agency. Uh, and if they're not lead agency as planning board, to see that the plans adequately protect, comply with the requirements and, and, and from being in the flood fringe overlay and adequately mitigate and prevent any stormwater damage. So there's no real issue there. No one's saying there will be, it's just a matter of the pa, the, the plan package and the approval needs to rely on some aspect of yours submitted to establish that there is no impact on stormwater. Traffic, we've already talked about. And, uh, one thing that's interesting on the traffic study is that, um, and I think, I think I've heard this mentioned by other planning board members, is that the, the statement is made that because of the, the increased resources and programming and of the new library, that visits are going to be longer. Well, that's good in terms of traffic, but it's bad in terms of parking because that means that there'll be less, less turnover. May be bad in terms of parking, but that might be, there's less turnover. So how does that longer stay impact? Something is a question that's, that's worth considering. On zoning compliance, there's a number of things that are just sort of an automatic kind of a, a thing. There's not any question about it. It's just us measuring yards and distances and setbacks. And so we see that there are a number of those kinds of encroachments and yards. And it, as part of the SECRE review, which is all I'm talking about now, there'd be some discussion of the, you know, land use and zoning aspect of the project. And so, some, you know, inclusion of these real yard setback encroachments really might just need to get mentioned and addressed. And there's also a thing about the height of the building, where there could be a, a, a variance because of it being a different height and a different, a few different places. But that's, as I said, in that, all cases over thirty-five feet, which is the maximum permitted. So, there has to be some discussion of that. Of course, that kind of thing can, you know, if it's something that's required, there can be a variance of that, but it's a matter of review and approval. So, um, uh, so what we're saying is just to go over, you know, some of the comments we've made and do sort of a, an analysis of what kinds of area variances and, and requirements need to be necessary. Because that's really an important part of SECRE, to properly identify the approvals that are going to be needed. So, that can be read through. They're not, they're not anything that, evidence that the lighting is going to be dark sky compliant, which is just an obvious thing. And then in construction, which is the last category, the planning board very often, it's under EAF too, asks about what kind of green measures are going to be in the building. And so, that first item is, you know, that either the EAF or, excuse me, sorry, even in SECRE review, if the library, if it's lead agency chooses to include that kind of information in their SECRE review. Or the planning board during site plan review may very well ask that question as well. So that, so that was one item. Just some statements about demolition and construction materials, which is standard. And then, um, um... So the third bullet is, you know, plans for construction staging, equipment, just some discussion about, you know, how the job would be mobilized. And that's certainly something that would be site plan review. And it really be SECRE review as long as obviously a, assuming it can be done in a way which, you know, eliminates storage to coastal property lines or storage in the yard areas or areas that are, you know, sensitive to, to the creek. But just some statement about how those things get handled. Water usage, sewage flow. So, um, I, I wasn't sure if, if those kind of utility systems, I don't recall that right now and I'm thinking about it in this memo, to what ex, and I'm just asking the question without correcting an answer this wrong, but to what extent are the water usages, sewer flows obviously are septic? uh, water usages, sewer flows obviously, septic system abandonment, um, and, and have water and sewer being handled? You know, so that, because the planning board certainly incorporates them, acknowledging that water and sewer are properly provided for. You know, very often those reviews are based on somebody else's technical readout, but the planning board's review sort of certifies that there is adequate water and sewer. And then, um, and then the fuel, the fuel storage tank, so that there is a fuel, a fuel tank there now and, and what's its condition and if it's going to be taken out, just, you know, that will be taken on, forms all procedures and supervised and building inspector permits and just, you know, some kind of commitment to it being done in a way which is fully protective of the environment. So I don't know, I hope that's helpful, but, but certainly planning board members chime in with things I've forgotten.
Well, thank you, Matt.
Chime in with things.
Thanks for going through that, very co, uh, complete and, uh, I don't think anything got, uh, missed. Um, I, I do believe though that, I think everybody understands that the library later will come before the planning board for a site plan review. And at that time, we'll deal with most of the issues that you've brought up, um, about zoning, um, heights, uh, um, fuel tank, et cetera. Um, so those we will be dealing with in the site plan review. Um, and basically what we want to do now is have the planning board, uh, make a decision as to whether they feel that there's any environmental issues under SEACR that are grave or big enough, uh, for us to, um, not go with a neg deck. So let me ask members of the board, any member of the board, having heard Matt's review and having read the library review.
Guys, I'm unmuted. I'm unmuted. This is Stuart here, can you hear me?
Hi Stuart, yep.
Okay, so, uh, I wanted to, can you hear me? I'm getting a little feedback, I apologize. Um, um, Matt should understand that we've already agreed with the library, that the library is going to serve as the lead agency. I wasn't clear from what Matt was saying that he understood that, so.
Yes, yes I do.
Okay. And, um, the other thing that I have a question about is since they are the lead agency, does the decision on whether to make a positive or a negative declaration, is that within their exclusive realm now? I mean, I, I thought that as an involved agency, we may comment, but I didn't realize that it's our job to, at this point, make a finding of positive or negative unless you're wanting to comment on that, Peter. So I have a question just to ask that, maybe Matt can.
Well, I have an answer, I have an ans, I have an answer to that and, and it was always my understanding that the board has had, and the library had discussed, uh, the lead agency and, and made certain conditions, not conditions, but a certain process that would get followed, and that this submission by the library board and this review by, um, the planning board is, uh, with the understanding that the library is going to be lead agency. And it is the lead agency and the lead agency alone that makes a neg deck or a pos deck, a determination of significance. What the planning board is going to be and what this memo is completely consistent with is an involved agency. And as an involved agency, you have the obligation to inform the lead agency, which is the library or going to be the library, of all of the issues of concern that you, the planning board, think have to be dealt with, uh, in SEACR by the library board or will be dealt with by the planning board in site plan review, which will happen at some point when full submissions are made. So Stuart, I'm agreeing with you and Peter, I don't quite understand the, the, certainly asking the board, as you've suggested about environmental impact that you think need to be investigated, that's appropriate and would be helpful, but the planning board is not going to make a determination of significance. Um, you as an involved agency have just, are submitting this memorandum as it may be revised based upon planning board input. You are providing this input to the library for them to know they have to deal with, as I said, in SEACR as lead agency or in site plan review. So I'm sorry for repeating myself, but just to make that point, planning board isn't really making the decision, Peter, that you were suggesting at this meeting.
Thank you, Matt, thanks for clearing that up. Yes, indeed, um, you're, you're correct, the planning board will not declare a neg deck or pos deck. What I actually mean is that the planning board has agreed with the review and has no further issues that it can, that the planning, that the library can go forward now with their decision.
Well, correct, but, but, but also, if I may, that, um, this memorandum, as it is right the way it is, or with changes, or with a cover letter from the planning board, which adds items or clarifies certain things, is in fact delivered to the library as the planning board's SEACR submission. And I think it's a very constructive approach that's being taken here because, um, you're giving the library the, I think, in my opinion, the proper authority to be lead agency and you're telling them what you, the planning board, need for your SEACR review. And you've also laid out in a very helpful way, some of the issues that you're going to need to see more about when they do make the site plan submission. So I think it's a very positive step that we're taking and what the planning board needs to decide is what they want to give to the library. This memo or this memo with a letter or added items or whatever, and that's really the action that you're taking tonight.
Thank you, Matt, thanks for clearing that up.
Peter, this is.
Judy had a hand up. Yeah, um, it seems to me that part of the confusion is that Matt's memo combines those two sets of issues. It seems to me that we could pass a resolution, um, supporting the library in a decision of neg deck, if we, if they decide to do a neg deck, noting that there are issues for the, for the site plan that were mentioned in Matt's memo that will still need to be taken care of at the site plan level of the, of the process.
Yeah, can you hear me?
Now I can, yes.
Okay, so, uh, I appreciate Matt's thorough guidance and I also appreciate Judy's, uh, point that she just made, but I, I wonder if we might be better off just confining ourselves, staying in our lane as an involved agency at this point and making comments. I, I don't know why we have to take a position supporting a neg deck or opposing a neg deck at this point. It seems to me our role should be to make specific comments so we're on record as to our concerns and then leave the burden on the library to make the proper decisions as to what declarations or determinations they're going to make. Um, so, you know, I think we're supporting the library by doing this process, but I don't know that we have to go so far as to support, um, a neg deck when their plans don't even reflect all the changes that were being discussed. For example, Peter, you, you indicated that, uh, Jeff Collins, I believe you've been in touch with, and I think is acting in good faith, has indicated that the library has agreed to do certain things, but one of them, for example, um, on the idea of having employee parking be moved over to the Como lot on the other side of 212, he, he, his email about that said that the executive director said that would be okay, but I don't know if the trustees have ever even considered it. And it, it, it also, uh, there was an indication that they're going to subtract the hardware spots from their assumed number of parking spots and, but the plans that we have, the preliminary plans, don't yet reflect that. And I think I'm a little nervous about going on these, uh, say so's, uh, in the way that it's been done, uh, without just commenting about it and letting them, requiring them to, uh, give us something and writing on that at least in terms of the plans that we have so that we can always look back to the plans. I know, it's, it's a thought, it's process, it's much essence.
You, you would certainly get those kinds of assurances as part of your site plan review. At, at this stage of the game, what's being done is, is a very clear, um, uh, uh, statement of what the parking issues are. You know, who, the, how's the hardware store parking being counted? How's the Como property going to get, get involved? What's the actual parking demand, which is, you know, what is the number of required spaces, which is something that I brought up based on the size of the building? So what you're saying is you're playing the role of involved agency, not by, you really can make any kind of comment about negative impact now, because you're asking for key answers to key questions that are going to, some of them have a bearing on whether there's an environmental impact or not, or how they're being mitigated. So there shouldn't be any statement other than, these are the issues that we think need to be covered in SEACR and if they're not covered in SEACR, they're going to be covered in site plan. You don't really need to say more than that at this point. And it's up to the library to decide when they're going to do more information, but they know that when it comes time for the planning board, they're going to see, they're, they're going to be required to have a, a full parking plan, maybe some backup in terms of a parking study, you know, that sort of looks at the, the, the projected visitorship and lanes to stay and, and actually calculates numbers of parking, spaces needed and, but has, what you're doing is you're telling them they have to do a little bit more work on parking. And that's all you have to say to them right now and that's a very helpful thing for you to say, as Peter, as Stuart was just saying.
So, uh, Matt, at this point, is it, you're suggesting that the planning board makes a resolution to pass your memo to the library for their consideration? Is that basically where we are?
Well, except that I would ask, like, for example, what Stuart just said, the answer to that is yes, Peter. Of course, there's always with me a but, and, and the but is only that, like, for example, the comment that Peter just made about there being written assurances about some of the parking arrangements. Well, some of those kinds of statements that you, Peter, in your opening comments and, uh, Stuart just said now and what Judy just said, those kinds of things can be added to the memo. So it isn't just a memo the way it is, I would say that it could be, you know, revised based upon, uh, tonight's discussion. Not revised, but just, you know, just one or two things added or clarified.
Well, if I could make a, again, this is Stuart again, if you can't hear me, yell.
Yes, we hear you.
Okay, um, if I might suggest, we might consider, this is not making the resolution yet, but authorizing, uh, Peter, to transmit Matt's memo, uh, to the, uh, library district, but to hold it, let's say, give, well, planning board members an opportunity to furnish Peter with such further specific comments beyond Matt's memo that they would like Peter, uh, to, uh, include along with that memo, you know, in an email or a letter, what have you, um, and leave it to Peter's discretion as to the additional comments. Does anyone have any thoughts about that? This way it creates a window for all of us to think about what's been said tonight, reread the Matt's memo, and if there's anything additionally that we feel needs, is deserving of a comment, they ask Peter to put it in, into his transmittal. What do you think about that?
Uh, very interesting, Judy has her hand up, so, uh, Judy, do you have a comment on that?
I'm a little puzzled procedurally. I mean, I don't understand the extent to which the parking issue is reflected as a, as a co, a component of SEACR. That, that seems to me one of the issues here. There are things that are clearly site plan issues that are, may or may not be, and I, you know, I read the material, but that's a lot of material. And even though I just had a training session on SEACR, it's not clear to me what procedurally needs to be dealt with now for them to have SEACR done and what parts of it belong in the site plan but not in the SEACR. And maybe Matt can enlighten us.
Yes, they're, they're overlapping kinds of things. So parking, of course, is a site plan issue and a zoning issue, there's required number of spaces, where are they going to go, do they need to design requirements and all of that. But it's also a SEACR issue because if for some reason it's not enough parking, for some reason or other, or it's located in a way which causes other problems in terms of pedestrian problems or management problems or whatever, or it's how they propose to provide the number of spaces, that's can be an environmental issue. If, if, if there's backups in terms of getting spaces, where there aren't enough spaces and, and people are double parked, that's, that, that's part of, that could be very much often and is a part of a traffic study. And so the answer is that many of these things are both site plan issues and environmental issues.
Thank you.
And that's why all you, all you really have to do is give them this list and as lead agency, it's going to be up to them, because you, that's part of the deal is that they're going to be lead agency. It's going to be up to them whether they add more information now before they make their negative declaration and then they do some additional, uh, SEACR work and some of these issues are real SEACR issues. So they have some obligation to, to freshen up this SEACR package a little bit before they make a determination. But for anything they don't, and this is a very important point, for anything they don't really handle, in your opinion, properly under SEACR, which isn't really going to matter because they're the lead agency, but when it comes time for the planning board review, you've made it very clear to them in this memo that these are things that you need to have addressed. And they, they don't have to be big things, they can be things that are just incorporated into design or a mitigation measure or written assurance like Stuart said. So it's not, she thinks not simply SEACR or site plan. You're just putting them on notice as to all of the things that you as the planning board think have to be addressed a little bit further than they were in the preliminary package you were given. And that's a very positive and constructive thing for you to be doing. It's simple and it's, it's this memo plus a few more things and you're done with it and you've done, and you've done the right thing. You've got the lead agency with the library, which is the correct thing to do. Stuart used the exact words, you've put the onus on them to, you know, to determine how far they go in, in SEACR. And if they don't go far enough for you when it comes time for site plan and they make a submission to you, you're going to have a second shot at them giving you the information you need. So it's really the right way procedurally to handle this thing. It's very simple and, and, and it's going to work very well.
Okay, so back to Stuart's, uh, point about us, uh, deciding what additional things we would like to add to the memo that we send to the library. Um, the issue is we have to find a way to do it, uh, through the open meetings law. So if we're going to add things to this, we have to do it in an open meeting. So either we do it now while we're in an open meeting or we find another way. But if, so the proposal now is to submit Matt's memo to the library, but we've already agreed that there's a few additional things that we want the library to consider. So can we put that, or Stuart or someone, can we put that so Melissa can include that? Can we do that while we have an open meeting going on? I'm losing you, Stuart, I can't hear you.
Can you hear me?
Yep.
Yeah. I'm in the seat of a car on the long island expressway, so I don't know if we're going through zones or what, but, uh, I'm on the internet, so let's see what happens. Can you still hear me?
Yep, yep.
First of all, Peter, I don't know if it's been discussed tonight, at the last meeting we were told that, um, uh, the library district had to, was looking to hear from us by, um, August 3rd for them to do something with their bonding resolution in time for election day. But since that time, it's my understanding that they've, uh, gotten a later deadline for their needs, uh, but I don't think that's been mentioned tonight. Maybe you could clarify that so we all understand what the timeframe is from the library's perspective to hear from us.
Yes, that's true, that, uh, the, uh, state, uh, law changed to allow them to do it, uh, 30 days later. So they have an extra 30 days to, uh, prepare.
So early September, and, and when is our next, uh, planning board meeting after tonight?
Um, I'm not sure when the next, uh, meeting would be, but, um.
It's, it's next week, it's the 6th.
So, Peter, how would you or the other members feel if, uh, we had until next week to get you additional comments to consider and then at the next meeting we could take them up, uh, at an open meeting and, uh, then decide what package to send over to the library? I would imagine it would be Matt's report plus whatever additional comments are decided to be added to that and then we have it all done in an open session.
Uh, yeah, well, two things, of, of course, the planning board, it's not our issue about deadlines, but because this is a public library and it's our town, we're trying to, we're trying to do the best we can to get them there. So I don't, I think, I don't see that many issues. I don't know why we can't say them right now to Melissa so she can add it to the memorandum and we can do it now so that it's done because.
Well, I agree. Well, I, I have one issue that I would like to be added, it's touched on somewhat in Matt's report, but the, the issue that I would want to be added, the comment I would be added, so we want to know what is the library's disposition going to be of the... to be of the underground fuel tank that presently exists at the property? Because it's a high ground water table, and there are obvious impacts if the piping or tank fails to the environment, and their own report says that the underground piping is not up to code. So that's a concern, I think, we should do it as a set, as an additional comment. Matt's report talks about, asking about to be informed of any new installations that may be considered, but it doesn't really address what's to be done with the existing. So...
That's correct, that's correct.
Yeah, so...
The presumption is it's being taken out, but what we're asking for is what is the procedure for them taking it out to guarantee safety of the resources?
Right, but I, I'm not comfortable assuming anything. They have to tell us what they're going to do with us.
Yeah.
We want them to tell us what, how, what is their decision going to be on disposing of the existing underground fuel tank and associated piping.
Okay, that's a good point.
That, that's, that's good, that's good.
So the other point that was brought up was the parking spaces on the, on this hardware store property, and had the library's agreement that they would not include those spaces in their site plan review count. So if Melissa can add that, that's...
So we want, we want them to confirm that.
Can you email me that, Peter?
Sure.
Just the exact of the parking, so I can just word it.
Okay.
The other issue with parking was making sure that that handicap space that is right next to the building, and a good thought, because it's near the ramp, is van capable, which is not clear from the drawings.
And also, we had the comment that, that there's a side aisle that's, that's missing. But van accessible is a very good comment.
Oh, it's kind of the same thing.
Oh, good, okay, good. So that's, so we're saying the same thing then? Okay, okay, good. So these comments, these additional things, they're just going to be added into the comments where this is already discussed. Like, there's a section where we discussed the underground tank, we'll just make it clear that it's not only the new one, but it's the existing one. And with this parking issue, it's just going to be in the section that's like four or five bullets on parking. So we'll just, we'll just incorporate this idea into that set of comments. So it's a slight editing of the, of, of the text to incorporate these additional aspects of some of these issues. So it's, it's very helpful, so keep going. And Peter, so would you, you for me, what would the, the basic summary be of the same? I know you were talking about Como property and the use of that, and, and the idea of getting the crosswalks, and so the, how would you word in, in, in one sentence, what would be added or changed in my memo regarding that Como property parking issue?
I'm not sure I caught the question, Matt, but...
Hang on. Matt, are you, are you suggesting that instead of me write an additional memo, that you will revise your memo with the planning boards updated, so we have one concrete memo to submit to the planning board?
I think that's the easiest way to do it.
I agree with you, thank you.
If the board, if the board's okay with that.
Yeah, of course.
Because I didn't, I didn't know I said, you know...
I just wasn't sure if everyone else understood what you were saying, so I wanted to clear the air.
Glad you did, because now that, that makes a lot more sense to have Matt revise his memo and send it to the board.
To incorporate these ideas, right, to incorporate these ideas.
So the other two ideas that, that Jeff and Stuart and myself worked out was, one was that the library would agree to have their employees park at the Como parking lot to free up spaces for patrons at the library. And the other is that the library agrees to let the planning board have an independent engineer review the stormwater retention during the construction phase.
Well, that's in our memo, and that's completely within your discretion.
Okay.
So that, and, and engineer stormwater review, absolutely. One thing I have, so with this discussion then, as soon as this memo is edited to the satisfaction of whomever the board chooses, Melissa or, or whatever, it can go to the library directly, because I was going to say regarding Stuart's suggestion by taking the extra week, the idea that their timeframe is delayed and they have a month, it would be nice if they used this month to address some of these issues that you're coming up with. And so that when they do, if they really are going to make a leg deck in 30 days, it would be better if they addressed some of what you're giving them. So I would think that you, the sooner you got it to them, the better, so they could start, you know, improving, start making use of your good comments, of your helpful comments.
Okay, now, of course, the other issue is that these things that will come up in site plan review, we're not going to be doing a site plan review until the library does or doesn't get their bonding, because that's...
Yeah, of course.
...for the, for the draw, for the, for the drawings, for the...
Plans, of course.
Okay, I, I have a suggestion. You guys have laid this out, if Matt penned in the next few days, before we meet next week, if we could just see that memo, and then as soon as we, you agree on the revisions that he made, I'll gladly forward it to, to Jeff, to forward to the library, and we're talking a week turnaround time if Matt's okay with that.
Sounds good. Matt?
Yes, so they don't have this memo yet?
Uh, they got it today.
Yeah, I authorized it to have it today.
And are library people on the call?
Nope.
Okay.
We have people here, we have quite a few people here from the library, that way.
Dorothea is here, Jeffrey's here.
Oh, good, good.
Dorothea's here.
Mark's here.
Yep.
Great.
So I, I think we have an agreement then, that Matt will revise his memo, and then give it to Melissa, who will give it to the library, and they will incorporate that in their SEACER determination.
Right, but Melissa also indicated she would circulate the revised memo to...
To you guys.
...your members, and then we would, then we would authorize it to, to be issued to the board of the library district as our comments, assuming that there's no issue, no, no issue with it.
Right. So I'm willing to commit by next Friday, we have a meeting Thursday, next Friday, Friday at some point during the day, I will mail this, because I will see all your lovely faces next Thursday, to make sure that you've all read the revised memo from Matt.
And so I'll produce, I'll produce a version that has the changes, in fact, changes, so everyone can see what those changes were. And the time doesn't, as long as the library already has this thing, and they've heard on tonight's call what the additional items are that are being discussed, they, they are in a position to be able to use, you know, have the benefit of your input now. So I would do some work if they choose to, and then receive the edited memo pointing to what Melissa just said. So I think it's a very positive way to handle this at this point.
Okay, thank you very much, Matt. Anybody else on the board have any other issues about the library SEACER review? If not, we'll close that segment. And I thank everybody for their participation and their input, and I think we're doing a good job getting the library on their way. So next week, we will finalize that. So unfinished business. We have to make a motion to approve an addendum to the resolution of the Crown Castle for the, for the network station, for the...
Replace some equipment.
Yeah.
Upgrade.
There was a slight, a, a change to our, to our motion, so... As I did read it, Stuart, have you seen the changes to the, to the Crown Castle agreement for the cell tower? I might have lost Stuart.
Yeah, he's muted.
But anyway, they were very minor, so I, I'd say we go ahead and pass it. So...
I, um, I, when I prepared it, I looked at the original one and some other ones, and I tried to put it together and make it modern, just so you know what, how I came up with those.
Yeah, I, I read it, it looked fine. So I'll make a motion to pass the addendums to the resolution.
A second, a second motion.
On favor?
Aye.
All right, okay. We also have a request to, for an extension of the Ingrid Josephson SUP for timber harvesting on Glasgow Turnpike. This has been going on for some years now, they keep asking for extensions. I guess there's no reason not to give it to them, but this is like the fourth one.
I only say because he said due to COVID.
Right, yeah, well...
So we give him one more year?
Give him another year. And let's hope that's the end of COVID.
And this logging case.
Yeah.
So...
All right, make a motion.
I make a motion to approve the extension of the logging permit for one more year.
Second.
On favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I abstain.
Of course, now, the elephant in the room is the room that we may have to be into shortly. Unless the governor changes, makes a change, our supervisor said that it's not his decision, this is a state from our governor. So it looks like we're going to be in the, in the building, not the next meeting, but the one thereafter.
The community center, so we can try to space out.
Now, yes, I can see that chairs can be far apart, I hope there's some kind of microphones, because with masks on and too far apart, it's going to be hard to hear each other. So, and then as far as the public goes...
The town can pay for my $2,500 hearing aids, which I will only need for that meeting and similar events.
So...
That might get Bill's attention.
Hopefully, the governor will make a change for, who knows? But that's what we're, that's what we're up against.
Judith, I'm glad you haven't lost your sense of humor.
And I, I'm keeping you guys up to date with everything that I know, and I'm rolling with it and trying to do what I need to make our meetings happen.
Question, please, are they considering doing a hybrid?
I don't think that was an option from the government, right, from New York State.
But is there any reason we cannot do a hybrid?
Yes. Ashley will come talk, she knows a little bit more about this than I do.
Open meeting laws state that everybody that is ma, part of a vote on a board have to be in the same public room. If you want to recuse yourself from a specific vote, you could not be at the meeting. I mean, as long as you have a quorum, you can vote on something, but that's a personal decision.
Okay, thank you, Ashley, I appreciate that.
You're welcome.
Yeah, the, the only thing is that I kind of remember ZBA had, had agreed that they could have their members log on through the internet for their meetings, and that was okay.
I think ZBA is going to meet there before we will. They, I've been talking to their administrative assistant, we're, we're actually planning to go to the community center and see the setup, so we know what we're in for. She doesn't attend the meetings, just the ZBA does, so you guys are really lucky to have me. But we are planning on going to look and see what it looks like and what we need to do to execute this to make it happen.
Okay.
It's scary times.
Yeah, that's for sure.
I'm going to go on the record, if I may, I, I can't imagine attending any of these meetings in person.
I know, I'm not...
I've already said the same thing.
Yeah, this is Stuart here, John Laval expressed a similar...
Yep.
...concern about attending, you know, we're not all the same age or the same condition, and we all have our own individual needs, and we should be respected. I don't understand what the rush is to get the local planning boards back to an in-person meeting, assuming that only, pretty well. I had an email asking Bill if he might reach out to the Association of Towns, because they're lobbying towns, and we can't be the only town volunteer board that is facing this situation of having to be required to, you know, be in a public setting when there's no real need for it immediately, and face this same pandemic. So with other towns, maybe we can get the governor to, to extend it for another 120 days or something. But that's just an idea.
Ashley just said, like, that's our hope, you know, I mean, the Zoom meetings have been working, and I feel like we, we like Zoom meetings, and, and we've all rose to the occasion, like, all of us, to do what we have to do and to continue to do our job and show up. Um, you know, hopefully, that'll happen in the next few days, which is why I pushed for the next meeting to be another Zoom meeting, which technically, we shouldn't be, but we're going to. So let's hope and cross our fingers, and I will again stress to Supervisor McKenna that you guys are very uncomfortable with this, because I can't do anything if we don't have a quorum. So if I don't have four people at the community center, it's null and void.
All right, and we may not, we may end up not having quorum.
That's true. If we're not there, there's no meeting.
Exactly.
So, Mr. Schiefer?
Yes?
What say you?
Well, it's a pretty fact, if you're not there, then if there's no quorum, there's no meeting. I don't know, the governor may have to think about that.
We don't even have to resign, we just have to not come.
Thanks.
If I, if I don't attend because of COVID concerns, I will waive my honorarium salary as a planning board member for that meeting.
Your generous, your generous salary, along with the rest of us.
Don't leave me yet, okay? Let's, don't leave me yet.
Well, we'll see what, what news we get from you.
And I want you guys to be comfortable. Obviously, that's why I wrote the email.
Thank you, Melissa.
Thank you, Melissa.
Okay, everybody...
One more thing, approve my minutes for February 6th.
Motion to approve the minutes of February 6th.
Second.
Thanks, Judy, thanks, Stuart.
Okay, well, I entertain a motion to adjourn.
I'm moved.
On favor?
Aye.
See you all next week.
Take care, everybody.
Bye-bye.
Thank you.